Uh, anymore every day is a blur, you know? Okay, so you can go ahead and just introduce yourself and tell us why you decided to run for city council?
Yep. So hi, I'm Justin Lewis. And I am running for city, oh, I'm a Des Moines resident, born and raised. East side of Des Moines. I get pretty rowdy about my east sided of my east side home. Uh, Lee Township against the world, if you, if you know what I mean. So yeah, product east high, went to Iowa State. Uh, on MVP scholarship multicultural vision program. Uh, and graduated in two thousand and twelve with political science degree. Uh, then from there started a small business called Lewis Law and Labor. In two thousand and fourteen operated that full time for about four years. Had to shut it down out of necessity of uh, being able to find affordable insurance. And as contractors, uh, that it's very hard. We're usually the ones left on limbo, uh, and we usually have to take the brunt of that cost and I just couldn't afford it. Our daughter cost us ten thousand dollars. And we just got that paid off um, earlier this year, actually. Uh, then we had our son, uh, when I was at, I'm currently a state employee. And uh, it was free to have him so with the insurance plan. So I'm a big believer on, you know, access to uh, healthcare and insurance Medicare for all. Yes, absolutely. Uh, so yeah, that's, that's why I shut that down. And then from there, Black Lives Matter took place. And I started Des Moines Selma. Uh, as a state employee, I do the implicit bias training for the health department's business unit and contractors. Uh, so I really enjoy that work. I, I love being a teacher. And I love seeing people get that aha moment where I can make a connection. And they can start unpacking those, those biases and, and those experiences that uh, they have picked up that may not be rooted in someone else's reality. Uh, and then last spring, I relaunched Lewis on a labor. We're focusing on urban eco sustainability. So we do soil restorations and rain gardens. Uh, and really focusing on helping hold as much water. On a homeowner's property so we can keep our waterways clean as, as best as we can and, and prevent flooding as well. Uh, so why I ran, uh, I love the city of Des Moines. I feel like there needs to be some black voices on there. I feel like there's needs to be folks with open minds. And I feel like there needs to be a person who can uh, seek out different experiences so they can give good equitable decisions. I don't think we get that at all on Des Moines City Council. I think a lot, a majority of folks hold their own opinions. And they govern with their own opinions and that leads us uh, into a particular place where we have a lot of blind spots. Uh, and a lot of things don't get addressed in an equitable way. Uh, so I'm running so I can be that voice. That I can be a champion for everyone, but then also start convincing those voices. Uh, on city council to do a better by the, the community. Uh, now that they have uh, someone that is well versed or wants to be well versed in other people's lived experiences. So that's why I'm running uh, to be a champion for all. Uh, and you know, ho- hopefully turn Des Moines into uh, a sign, a shining city on a hill. I know that's a Reagan thing, but I'm taking that back. Uh, because I talk about it all the time. We are the first in the nation when it comes to politics and if Des Moines can figure out how to work together collectively. Uh, we can be the example for the nation and I, I truly believe we can do that. So. Oh yeah, you said that.
Thanks, Justin, for your introducing yourself. We're gonna get started on the interview. Um, and just to give you a little i- idea, we'll have uh, five different question areas that match closely. To what was on the questionnaire. Uh, different members of the team will ask you a question each. Um, you'll have three minutes to respond. In your answer, there'll be a follow-up question where you'll have around thirty seconds to respond. And we'll just tick, tick off the issues and go like that. And then at the end, we'll give you a chance to, to offer some closing remarks. Okay? You have any questions, Justin?
Uh, no, let's let it, let's let them roll.
All right. So first up is uh, Laurel, who'll ask you some questions about racial justice.
Hi, Justin. Thank you for joining us. I'm excited to be able to ask you a question this evening. Thank you. Uh, Laurel Clinton, she her pronouns. I am a resident of Des Moines in Ward one. I'm part of the CCI racial justice team for about three years. I've been a member. And I think you were a member at the same time. So you kind of know. What we've been up to. We were part, took a big role in creating the six point anti racial profiling ordinance. Presented and adopted by the city last June. Although we were excited to get it, we know that it didn't have teeth and it's still gonna take work. City council did at the time that they adopted those ordinances, did agree to continue to work with CCI. However, they do neglect to um, force the chief to meet with us and our community members. Which is problematic for um, a lot of reasons. Um, we're excited about that win um, right now. Um, since we did take such an active role in creating those ordinances. Um, we do feel um, involved and we are concerned about who they chose to, to um. Teach the de-escalation portion of that, those ordinances. Fong and O'Neal. So we are trying to impact our city council and engage them in. The importance of having the right people training. Uh, simply because they need to get it right the first time. So here's my question to you, Justin. What concrete actions? And what will you do to actually win strong policies and advance real change on racial justice issues? If you are elected?
Yeah. So I think the first thing I would use is my voice. Uh, like you said, I've been involved, me and my wife have been involved with Iowa CCI. So I'm well aware. Of the games that certain city members play. Also, I'm aware of some of their, their own ignorance, to be very honest. Uh.
Right.
Re- recently Linda Westergaard, who represents the east side, which is a very, very diverse side of town. Uh, openly said, I just support police. Uh, and in that she said, oh, I will listen to other people, but I saw her listening to folks and not really implement. People's real life concerns. Um, I've talked to my friend Lonnie Porter, who was paid out thirty thousand dollars uh, about a year ago, who's afraid to share a story. Um, because it's, it continues to happen over and over again. And as a black man who has those same lived experiences, I'm, I, I want to bring the, the fire and ice and passion about. Stopping this nonsense that takes place. Um, so yeah, my voice will, will be a trumpet that will sit on city council. And, and push Dana Winger to meet with people and push him to have conversations, even if it's difficult, even if he doesn't understand it. And that's even for Godo and, and Manda Bomb and, and so forth to meet and do something. Um, and hopefully I will like to continue to organize, even at holding that seat to push people to show up. And can you tend to you to have those conversations? Uh, my campaign uh, constantly is discussing about the, the, the problematic. Issues of, you know, silencing speakers right now. And I know a lot of people are familiar with this, the grassroots fire that's taking place and I love it. Uh, but I, I believe that's the business of city council is to be listening to people and implementing those solutions. If they're tired of people showing up, do something. But don't silence people. Do something with their concerns. If you can't defund the police, find a way to, to hold your police accountable. And if, and by one, get ready enough people that have problematic backgrounds. Who are teaching de-escalation, that is the first step of having a good relationship with your community. And if you can't execute that properly, then what are you actually doing? So we shouldn't have bad actors. We shouldn't have people that have had paid outs uh, teaching that class. I was in a, I'm sorry, I was in a uh, neighborhood association and one of the sergeants was in there, a black sergeant. And he actually broke rank and said, Justin, I agree with you. He shouldn't be teaching that class and I have military experience. And guess how many complaints that I have on my overall record? Zero.
Zero.
There is better people that can teach that class. So it's too old. If you want the community to stop being upset, do think, do the things that look right and is right. Uh, and, and that's one thing that I will be doing is holding them accountable to that. Government accountability and transparency. So. That's the long answer. I could go on, all on day, all day.
And I appreciate that passion.
Okay, Laurel and, Laurel and Justin, we got one minute left for the follow-up, okay?
That follow-up question was, how will you pressure, how will you stand up to the pressure from Wingard and Sanders when they decide to push back? And not be responsive to us? What actions will you take?
Yeah, I just, I'm going to use social networks. I'm going to call people to have him, you know, apply pressure to him. Uh, use reverse psychology and, and everything to make sure he meets up. Uh, but then also the last tactic is. If, if they're not doing the job that best creates. An environment that's safe for people, then we need to start considering filling these positions with someone that can think more equitable and forward, forward thinking. Um, people shouldn't have to live in fear. And as a man that has had guns drawn on him and who was raising a black boy. Uh, I, I, I want Des Moines to be safe for everyone and specifically people of color.
I appreciate that. Stay strong, my brother. We got you. And I'm gonna pass the mic to Lori and take it away. Thanks, Justin. Bye.
Thanks, Justin, for those answers. Next we have uh, the subject of climate justice. And I believe that's uh, Nancy Goodman?
Yeah. Hi, Justin.
Hi, Nancy.
Very nice to meet you. Uh, Nancy Goodman, I live in Aitney. I'm a member of the racial justice team. And retired teacher. So I, when I started, I could be going on and on. So I'll probably get the gong here for being a teacher. Um, I want to talk about, about Mid-American and Alliance Energy. And how they have made a billion dollars in profit last year and that would be on the backs of the rate payers. And I also want to talk about the fact that they own and operate eleven coal-fired power plants in Iowa still. And the coal-fired, I did a lot of research on this because I, I didn't really know all the terrible things that, that they were doing. But the coal-fired power production poisons, it poisons the waterways. We've got mercury, we've got arsenic, we have lead and all this is going into our water. Goes into our Iowa rivers, of course. That's how they get that way, the seven hundred and fifty waterways. And it goes into the streams. And interestingly enough, in a typical year, just, just the coal fired power plant. Generates three point seven million tons of carbon dioxide. That would be our uh, global warming. It's ten thousand tons of sulfur, that's acid rain, seven hundred and twenty tons of carbon dioxide and it goes on and on. But anyway, if you live near one of these things, you're gonna have health problems. And they talk about not only, you know, lung and heart, they talk about cancer, they talk about premature death. And I myself would be personally affected by this because I have a lung disease. And I already have a terrible time trying to breathe. So they, you know, this is just a horrendous crisis that I don't think uh, they're doing much about. So I can see that they're making a profit and they're making a huge profit. It's, you know, it's, it's our health, really. But they're making a profit on. So what I was thinking is that we do need a hundred percent renewable system. Uh, just for us to stay alive. And I noticed in yours that you agreed with us. And this, I actually have a question and this is it.
Yeah, no, it's good. I love the, I love these backstories and.
It's um, when you said that you did, you did agree with us that we should uh, you know, be publicly supporting these. Um, that you support publicly owned democratically controlled utilities. And I know you said yes, but I want to get further into that. What, tell me more about that.
Yeah. So I, I believe that, you know, when we're, we're running things democratically, it should be. Uh, rooted and grounded in a diverse, diverse thoughts, opinions and experiences and backgrounds. Uh, so that should be people that live in those areas, people of different, you know, statuses and lives. Uh, and different types of rate payers, uh, so they can start making some good equitable decisions. It'd be no different from a, a review board for policing. Uh, so you know, the environment for me is a racial justice issue. Uh, and one thing that's on my platform is keeping our waterways clean. I'm not afraid of regulation. I think regulation is one of probably the most beautiful things. I love business because I'm a businessman, but it's also upon, it's also the, the duty of the government to regulate. You know, these industries specifically when you're burning coal, specifically when you're dumping. Uh, that should be a big no-no. And right now we are already facing a drought in our waterways. Uh, Water Works has already put out a APB and an alarm that, you know, we need to address this immediately and the nitrate rates are low. So yeah, one thing I, I would definitely love to do is help regulate that. Uh, ha- start having these conversations, bringing in community uh, folk. And you know, push the efforts forward to have them be accountable to what they're doing to our environment. Uh, if you're going to make profits off of Iowans, you're gonna make sure you're gonna be doing right by Iowans as well.
Okay. And I think you kind of answered that, but, but if you are on the council, how, how do you? I, I know that Josh has come out with the thing about wanting to have fewer coal power plants and I'm pretty sure county did too. But you know, but he's so wishy-washy, I don't know.
Yeah, I would be, yep.
But would you do that? Would you be able to work with, how would you get the others convinced to get on board?
Yeah. So if, that would give us three. So I know uh, just having those personal conversations, bringing them into. Organizations passionate like Iowa CCI and having these, these conversations. Uh, again, a lot of leaders only operate in their own opinions or who's paying their campaign. Uh, so one thing is I, I'm going to always be grassroots and if you like to donate five thousand dollars, I'm going to remind you that. This doesn't buy my vote. You're gonna have to show me why it's equitable and why it does right by all people, not just you. Um, so yeah, I will definitely stand alongside you with this effort to get a ri- get rid of those. Uh, replacing those with renewable energy and making sure that they're doing right by our environment and people.
Okay, super, super answers. I like that. Thanks, Justin.
Absolutely. Good, good question.
All right. That was great. Um, let's move to the next issue that sometimes I think doesn't get as much attention in a, in an urban setting. But affects us greatly, factory farms and clean water. And Sharice is gonna ask a question.
Hi, Justin. Uh, my name's Shree Martiz. I'm a fellow east sider. Um, you definitely have east side creds. Anybody that can quote east side against the world, uh, you, you're the real deal. So that was, that was refreshing to hear. Uh, anyway, I'm also a retired public school teacher, taught in Des Moines Public Schools. I've been a member of Iowa CCI for about ten years and I'm the acting C four board president um, at this point. Um, so I'd like to ask, um, in response to our question about standing up to corporate ag. You said, bring all stakeholders to the table and have a serious conversation about the issues that are at hand. Uh, what stakeholders exactly are you talking about?
Yeah. So stakeholders are actually would be everyone that's in Iowa. Specifically Iowa is a corn and soybean state. And it's, it does multiple things. One, we're not addressing food scarcities because we're only allowing these, these lands to be farmed. How can we start broadening these lands to grow carrots and kale and vegetables? So we can start feeding our population food that, that makes them healthy, makes them uh, wake up with life. Uh, and then next, when I'm talking about stakeholders, that's city government, county, people that live along the rivers. Anyone that drinks the water. So that's everyone uh, to show up and, and get to some solution. Uh, get past the conflict and get some resolve. Uh, one thing I talk about always is breaking the stalemate of politics, breaking the stalemate as a black man, breaking the stalemate of my lived experiences. Uh, so that, you know, white folks can understand what I'm going through so they can stop working against me. Uh, and in that, uh, in the, in that process, I have learned a lot of negotiating skills. Uh, how to we get through the weeds and get to uh, to, to, to solve the problem. So both sides looks good. Uh, at the end of the day, we don't want to look bad. So how can we? Position this in the way where, you know, factory farms looks great and the community came up and showed up uh, to, to make a difference. Uh, so it's, it's PR on both sides. So that's, I, I will definitely be working alongside. Uh, the community to help uh, prevent factory farms dumping pollution into our waterways. And again, doing right by Iowans and doing right by the state. If you're going to make profits off of our land, you gotta make sure you do it the right way.
Yeah, um, thank you. So I want to give you just a little bit of background, kind of about some of the work that we've been doing.
Yeah.
Around, around water quality and around the issue of the proliferation of factory farms. So at CCI, we've been fighting this battle for a long time. And uh, we, we have a pretty good history of bringing to the light today the degradation that the industrial uh. Pig production uh, sector has done to our, our water quality as well as our, our air and soil, soil quality. Um, so we've been, you know, preactive, we've met numerous, numerous times with the Iowa DNR and the Iowa Environmental Protection Commission. Uh, these two agencies are controlled really by the. Of uh, corporate pork producers. Uh, and factory farms gained a lot of favor and protection from any kind of oversight or regulation. Even penalties for illegally discharging manure. So the Iowa DNR and the EPC are not doing their job. Uh, we also spend time lobbying Iowa legislators and we attend legislative committee, committee meetings. Uh, regarding hog confinement industry and water quality. And we just recently, just a couple of weeks ago, met with Region Seven of EPA. Uh, they're located in Kansas City and we have a good working relationship with these guys. We know them. Um, so as you, as you seem to be aware of, the industrial pig industry is directly responsible for polluting over seven hundred and fifty water bodies across the state. And they are literally just simply producing more manure than they can responsibly manage. That is the problem. Two of, and so, you know, we, we have these massive quantities. Uh, manure running off into our lake streams and rivers. Two of those rivers are the Duane River and the Raccoon River that, as you know, we as Des Moines residents, we depend on those for drinking water. So um, you know, I, I think we anticipate this summer toxin levels will probably be high. We seem to still be in a drought pattern. Uh, and that is going to force Des Moines Water Works to go to extraordinary measures to mitigate the contamination. To provide safe drinking water to a half a million rate payers. Um, and you know, that's, that's just unfair. That it's going to be passed on to us, that they are externalizing their costs. Um, just quick history, Bill Stowe, former Duane Water Works GM who recently passed. Filed a lawsuit in twenty seventeen, which Iowa CCI wholeheartedly supported. And that was a lawsuit against three districts just north of us that are sending massive amounts of polluted water down to us. And um, you know, again, we didn't dump that manure. Uh, we shouldn't be uh, tasked with uh, cleaning it up.
Cleaning it, right.
And uh, my east side neighborhood is already struggling. Many of them were living, living paycheck to paycheck before the pandemic. They're in worse shape now. They certainly don't need to see the rates being raised this summer. In uh, just recently in March of twenty nineteen. I, we partnered with Food and Water Watch and we filed another lawsuit. Because the state of Iowa is in violation of the public trust doctrine today. Which says that the state has a duty and obligation to protect the Raccoon River for use and benefit of all Iowans.
Right.
So because the current Iowa legislature, you know, supports this explosion of factory hog sites. Um, they have pushed some very vindictive bills and proposals. One of which was targeted at, at Duane Water Works.
Yes, I remember.
And that.
Hey, Sharice?
Yeah.
We got about thirty, thirty to forty seconds for a question and Justin's response.
So anyway, right now there is a, you know, tremendous pressure to force Des Moines Water Works or into a regionalization. A situation too, which is probably not going to be a, a good situation. So. My follow-up question is this, it has two parts. Number one. How can we count on you to be an ally with us as an advocate to protect our waterways from toxins? Coming downstream from the factory pig industry and. How will you help us protect Des Moines Water Work and the means of production of safe drinking water?
Right. I think the first thing is the city should have joined that lawsuit. Uh, so I had a great lunch with uh, Bill Stowe, one of Bill Stowe's good friends. Uh, and yeah, it was, it was just a great conversation. I just got a lot of background and I already admired Bill from a distance. Um, so I, I, I'm a big believer in clean water, but the city should have joined that lawsuit. City effectively staying out of it, effectively started working against Water Works. Um, I believe Water Works can, should continue to stay in local control, stay under the, the control that it is. Uh, but yeah, one thing is I'm, I'm going to show up for clean water. If our water is dirty, I'm going to say something about it. We're literally about to spend forty million dollars in, in a Berlin renovation, which will be a nice polling point place for Des Moines. And, and water sports and so forth. But that's a lot of money to invest when the water's dirty. That's a lot of money to invest.
That's right.
Water, water quality is low. Uh, so yes, let's, let's, let's do that. But let's make sure we're working upstream so that investment has some longevity and does what it needs to do. So it's not a waste like a parking garage downtown.
Thank you, Justin.
Absolutely. You guys know where the parking garage references, right?
Yeah.
Okay. That's wasted money.
Great, great conversation there. Thank you. Thank you so much, Justin. Um, now we're gonna move on to the next issue of co-governance. And that question will be posed by Katie. Katie, still with us?
All right, yeah. Had to take myself off mute. Hi, Justin. My name is Katie Beekler. It's very nice to meet you. Um, I use she/her pronouns, uh, and I've been a member of CCI for several years now. And I work for SEIU Local one ninety-nine and I've been doing community organizing in the Iowa City area for nearly a decade. I'm on this call tonight because what happens in Des Moines sets a precedent for what happens across the state. For example, we're seeing right now that uh, Iowa City City Council has started taking note of what's been happening in Des Moines City Council meetings. And they've started following suit.
Yep.
One of the many reasons that I'm a CCI member is because CCI believes in co-governance. Which is the idea that those of us who live in the community should be included in the conversations and solutions that our elected officials enact. It means we need our elected officials to be actively seeking out public input and listening to our ideas. It means our elected officials need to work with us.
Yes.
As we speak, I'm working on organizing with CCI and several other organizations. To make sure that the funds that are coming into our state, our counties and our cities from the American Rescue Plan. Are going to the folks who have been hit the hardest by COVID. This means hours of talking to frontlines workers, many of whom are black, brown and indigenous folks. Undocumented immigrants, previously incarcerated people and other marginalized communities. And helping them to tell their stories at public supervisor and city council meetings, most of them for the first time. And it takes a lot of courage for them to do so.
Right.
The problem is that it feels for so many of these folks like their stories are falling on deaf ears. Far too often, our elected officials nod while their constituents speak. Thank them for their bravery in telling their stories and then make backdoor deals with their special interests anyway, leaving everyday folks behind.
Yep.
So uh, my question, my first question to you is that you said in your questionnaire response. Uh, that you don't have all the answers, nor will you pretend to, and you stress the importance of creating solutions from our communities. So how would you show up for your community to get those answers and solutions?
This is my favorite question. Uh, so yeah, one of my campaign promises and when the seat is one that I will maintain is to show up at every, uh, every. Every neighborhood association. Uh, there's fifty-four, that's two a year. Uh, so that's showing up and getting the data, but even then working alongside organizations like Iowa CCI, NAACP, uh, LULAC. Uh, and, and so forth, so that I can be making the best decisions for people that live here. That pay taxes here, that pay property taxes, children go here and so forth. Like you said, Des Moines is, sets the precedent for other cities. And we're currently not showing up to the League of Cities, as I found out from my mentor, uh, which is a problem. Uh, everyone's looking towards us to be an example and we really gotta be that example. So I'm, I'm hoping to win this seat, uh, so I can set the precedent of what represent government looks like and that's showing up. Not just patting someone on the back for sharing, but doing something about them being vulnerable in that space and make those changes. Uh, I'm not afraid to vote no on things that just goes against uh, goes against equity and, and community interests. Uh, so yeah, I'm hoping to be the different person. Uh, that will allow people to see, maybe it's time to remove this person in ward such and such in this ward and this at large. And it gets time for a different mayor. Um, I want people to be excited about their government and people are not excited. Uh, so I hope I can bring that fire into this space. Uh, and we can, we can start building a Des Moines that uh, looks like us and uh, is like us.
Great. Um, as a follow-up to that, uh, how would you prioritize previously ignored communities and integrate their testimony into your work and into the city's budget?
Yeah. Um, so one thing I'm doing is going after uh, all communities, but specifically people that look like me. They, they don't vote uh, in, in these, these off elections. But I'm going to have a large registration turnout for them, even in our um, in our indigenous communities. And, and so forth. People that uh, you know, sadly, I don't want to be rude, who are not white, that are not turning out. If I, I can get their voices in, we can start making some equitable decisions in some of our neighborhoods that are being left behind. Uh, and what's, and what I always say as a black man, what's good for black America is good. Uh, and what's been, and what I always say, as a black man, what's good for Black America is good for all America. I, if if we're at the bottom tier, if we can raise that up, um, everyone will be be, will be successful. Uh, so yeah, I will be going after everyone, but I'm going to be thinking about some folks that have been left behind. Uh, and that will will eventually raise all boats uh and the tide, so.
Great. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Justin. We've got one more question, and that's gonna come from one of our members, Pootie. So you want to ask your question, Pootie, and I mute yourself?
Thanks, Lori. Hey, Justin. Good to see you too, likewise. If you don't know, I actually graduated from high school the same year Justin did, and we're both in economics class together, so. But for everyone else, my name is Pootie, um, lifelong resident of Des Moines, lifelong East sider. Um, child of immigrants. Um, I just wanted to ask you a question. Um, there's been a big increase in hate crimes against Asian-Americans across the country. Um, and I think that like, you know, because of the COVID crisis, people are like, don't know what to do, don't know where, how to put their anger out, and there's a lot of mistrust in government. Um, and unfortunately, a lot of the victims of hate crimes in the country have been against especially uh the elderly and women. Um, and uh, I thank you a lot for attending uh some of our Asian-American events this year uh against anti-Asian hate. That shows a lot of leadership and inclusivity. Um, and my question for you is, um, how do you, how do you envision Asian-American and other minority groups in your vision for a better public safety for everyone in Des Moines?
Yeah, so I think the first step is, you know, us showing up for the Asian community. Uh, I I was disheartened uh at the lack of diversity outside of those that showing up. So one, as a black man, I'm going to make sure that my community hears uh my my stance on this, and this is going to be that I'm going to show up and fight for you, just like I would fight for a black woman or a black man. Uh, and I'm going to hold the line and and advocate and 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 even have to grab somebody if I see the violence taking place and putting them on the ground. I I don't tolerate intolerance in my in my space or in my presence. I don't have the time for it. Uh, so I I will fight alongside you to make sure that you feel safe, uh, that you feel comfortable in your home. This is your home as well. Nobody else owns it. It's not just one certain type of American. Uh, so yeah, that that's my stance is I will fight just as hard as uh I do for my community.
Thank you, Justin. If I if I could uh ask a quick follow-up to that, um, I think at CCI, we're, we are always talking about coalition building across different communities, the different, you know, diversity, and also doing co-governance and like, you know, like we're go, you're gonna work with us as much as we're gonna work with you, right? On how we're gonna build a better Des Moines. Um, and like, would you be willing in the future to be work, like, working with other minority leaders, especially Asian-American community members, about how we can build a better Des Moines? Would you be open to that?
Yes, absolutely. Well, one thing I really want to, I really want to see is, once I get the seat, one, I would like to help no, push somebody to win a city, someone from the Asian community to get on city council and hold a seat as well. Again, we just, we just need, we have too much diversity in Des Moines, or to just be, no, sorry, I'm I'm trying to be Asian, and I'm not trying to be specifically racist, it's just white retired folks. That doesn't represent Des Moines. Maybe one retired person, but we need to have black folks, Asian folks, college folks. Uh, someone that's in their forties, someone that has children. Uh, we need different perspectives. We we're at a stand skill because we have only one uh frame of mind and and and, you know, one certain background. It seems like that sits on city council. Uh, so yeah, I will, any person that steps in the arena that uh is Asian-American that would want to run for city council, I'm gonna back them, because I I I just want to see something different. I want to see different perspectives. I want to see different lived experiences, so.
Awesome. Thank you, Justin.
Also, I want to do a co-rally with Des Moines Summer as well, uh, so that we can start showing the unity for this community, but don't tell anybody that.
All right, okay. Thank you so much, Justin. Thanks, Pootie, for those additional questions. Um, so we're we're about done here. Uh, we've got through all of our issues that we want to talk to you about. So we're gonna give you a couple minutes to give your closing remarks, Justin. And then uh, Jack will talk about next steps, and we'll be done, and you can sign off, and we're gonna stay on a little bit longer and talk and debrief, but if you want to just take a two minutes to kind of just close us, close us out. Justin, what you want us to remember about you?
Uh, yeah, so it looks like somebody said, remember you're running against Connie. Yes, absolutely. So I am I'm very aware that she is the established candidate, and it, she, I think she has been undefeated in her elections. So I'm I'm mindful of that, uh, but I'm mindful that, you know, I I have the energy to knock every door. I have the energy to fight for everyone and not try to exclude everyone. I'm I'm very well-versed in making space for all lived experiences, except for ones that don't want people's uh realities to be heard. Uh, and I think I have a great opportunity to win. I know we will win. Um, so I'm excited, but I really need grassroots organizations like Iowa CCI to back me uh, and start, start this this grassroots buzz. Uh, I I I'm quite frank, I'm quite, I remember quite well Obama's campaign and how that was very grassroots. Uh, and it started with excitement. I'm excited about what we can do here in Des Moines. And I hope you can be excited about my candidacy and the potential. Uh, if we get somebody that's forward-thinking, is willing to do the work and show up and have a commitment to people. Uh, and that's who I am, and that's who I'll always be. I don't want this job for the status, don't want this job because, oh, look at Justin, all the, this is, that's, this is not about me. My lived experience of what leadership is, I live about, I live by this meme where the leader sits on a plane, and at the, and the end of the podium, I'm speaking. And at the other end is a mass of people holding me on 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 the plane. When the people go away, I fall off the cliff. Um, so my big thing is, this is about people, uh, and I want to represent people. And I want you to know uh that this is your home, and I will be advocating for you always. And the last thing, I want to hold the seat of a politician. So it's an activist holding the seat of a politician. We all know what an activist is. It's a person that always shows up, always doing their research, always well-versed in what's going on. A politician is always uh, uh, it's always about the moment. What can he get from it? What can she get from that? What can they get from the moment, uh, the photo op? And I, it's it's not about that for me. It's about people. And I'm tired of seeing our people, our city, our communities hurting.
Thank you so much, Justin. We really appreciate your time tonight and talking with us. Um, I'm gonna ask Jack to kind of wrap us up with next steps, and you have a great weekend. I know you'll be camp, you'll be working.